Get to the right packet, workshop. Call the workshop to order, roll call please.
Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Councilmember Schwer is absent, councilmember Wong is absent, councilmember Norby.
Here.
Mayor Mungy.
Here.
Motion to adopt the agenda, please.
So moved.
So moved, councilmember, councilmember Coles and councilmember Norby. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. We have three topics tonight. First up is Century College Design Students Presentation on 916 Student House Selections. We have a tight schedule tonight, but we got you guys about 10 minutes to present, please. Come on up, please.
All right, come on up, welcome.
Welcome back.
Yeah.
Who we got the boards? I always get a little envy when I see the boards, I need to do some stuff.
Everybody in place? Are we ready? This is, I assume? Okay, thank you so much for having us. My name is Catherine Harrington. I'm the instructor of these, this little crew here who worked on the house this year. And it's always such a pleasure. We love this whole partnership with North St. Paul, with 916, and with St. Paul College. It's just such a great, great collaboration. And we're thrilled to show you what we've come up with this year, a little bit different. So I hope you'll like it.
Thanks Catherine, thank you for having us. We are honored to be here and appreciate the opportunity to design for this project. In the interest of time, we're going to jump right into our design concept. This year, we wanted to take a different approach aesthetically from previous years' projects. We decided we wanted to go with a transitional contemporary style to set it apart from its neighboring home. We took inspiration from a donated countertop and built the rest of our design around it. We wanted to use elements that were complement, that would complement the countertop. So we selected an upscale color palette with cool blues and warm organic wood tones that would elevate the overall aesthetic. The lighting we chose accentuates our selections and illuminate the clean lines throughout this design.
Beginning with the exterior, we employed a combination of horizontal siding and vertical board and batten to evoke visual intrigue and to create a striking contrast against the backdrop of the black roof. Meanwhile, the vibrant hue of the front door beckons you inside with its inviting allure. Upon stepping inside, you'll be greeted by the seamless transition where the warmth of the luxury vinyl planks gracefully meets the carpeted stairs leading to the basement. Continuing into the open living room, you'll be welcomed by the clean contemporary finishes that offer boundless potential, encouraging you to envision this space as your own. To the left, you'll discover the mudroom and laundry room where a stunning, custom crafted floating walnut bench commands attention against the backdrop of a striking, blue panelled accent wall. It's the perfect place to take a seat while you get ready or to drop your bags off when you come home. Exiting the mudroom leads you into the heart of the home, the kitchen. We opted for a sleek, white quartz for the perimeter countertops, strategically highlighting the focal point of the room, the stunning granite island countertop. The island cabinetry is a warm and elegant walnut, which complements the cool blue tones of the perimeter cabinetry. To enhance the modern aesthetic, we chose slab doors for a clean, streamlined appearance. These doors are tastefully accented with champagne bronze poles that infuse a touch of timeless tradition. Beyond the cabinetry lies the backsplash, featuring dimensional tiles that introduce depth, imbuing the kitchen with a subtle sense of movement and intrigue. The clean lines of the tile echo the essence of transitional style and effortlessly guide your gaze through the space. Moving down the hall, you'll discover the main level bathroom, which may be small, but makes a big impact. The abstract lighting dances playfully off the mirror, brightening the room and highlighting the high-end quartz countertop that creates a sense of luxury. This ambiance extends to the primary bathroom, where the selections echo those of the kitchen, once again showcasing the beautiful granite countertop, which rests atop every homeowner's dream, a double vanity. Meticulously placed lighting highlights the clean lines of the space, embodying the contemporary feel of the home. Descending to the lower level, you'll discover two bedrooms, a family room and the lower level bathroom, which gives off an inviting, earthy aesthetic. Featuring a quartz countertop and a captivating patterned floor, it offers a timeless charm that welcomes you in.
Overall, this design really meets our starting criteria and fulfills our vision to create an original, unique home that exudes sophistication and creates value for the homeowner with our custom selections and well-thought-out concept. The real-world experience that this project has given us has been invaluable. It has shown us the reality of interior design. Things don't always go as planned, and sometimes you must overcome obstacles. But even with all its challenges, seeing the final product is well worth it. We want to thank you again for this amazing opportunity to participate in this design build partnership. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Beautiful finishes, looks real nice.
Any questions?
Yeah, can I say that again? No, I was kidding.
Re-run.
No, it looks great.
It's on video, YouTube.
Thanks again.
Yeah, thank you for everything.
I appreciate you.
Appreciate it.
You're way more creative than I, Catherine, thank you for coming back every year.
Oh, that's awesome, thank you.
Thank you so much for your assistance.
Yeah, good to see you, thanks a lot.
Great work.
Pre-budget workshop, Tom's not here? Oh, okay. Mayor, this is where you tell your favorite joke or do your favorite dance.
That's right. Part of the entertainment committee. Yeah, you did a nice job. Any updates back there, Ron? Want to tell us about all your trees you've been cutting down or anything like that? Or?
I gotta fill some diner.
Yeah, come on up.
Bring Randy.
That's right, partner in crime.
You can give some sort of update.
There's nobody behind you to look for.
Yeah.
Yeah, little boy. You like to be on.
Hats off to the crew, I see them back out cleaning, sweeping the streets again, that's awesome.
Yeah, we're out for a second time.
That's right.
Go around, nice. Yeah, we thought we were way ahead of the game because we didn't have snow. So we got through the city one time and, well, now we're starting again, which is good. The trees are budded and once they'll start, you know, fall, we'll get that cleaned up. Trees, contractors in, he's got 50 trees to take out for the EAB, that was part of our grant. The, I get, the big thing with, that we got going right now with those is all the dumps are closed for us to get rid of the trees. I guess over the winter time where we usually bring our trees and they chip them up, down at Pig's Eye, they use that for energy or burning the energy or take heat for energy. The burner went out and I guess they can't get one for two months. So all the dumps basically right now are closed for us to drop our trees. So what we're doing is we're piling them down at McKnight in the old tennis court down there until we figure out what and if, when we can start offloading these trees somewhere. So you're probably going to see big piles of trees down there if people see that. That is why we don't really have an option right now. The county dumps where the residents would go to, the cities could never dump there. This year, Randy made some phone calls and we got in where we could go out there and dump for a couple of weeks. And they just started to fill up too quick, so they stopped letting the cities go and dump there. So like I said, if you hear anything or people say, why are they, why is there all these brush and stumps or logs piled down at McKnight, that's what that is for.
See why campfire is what we're putting up?
Yeah, and right now, you know, like the county, we usually dump out Ramsey County Jail out there. We have a spot out there, but they're full out there also. They've been chipping, but they have excessive amounts of wood chips right now and they're trying to offload those or get rid of them. It's just spacing, they don't have room for them, so.
I'm glad we got the space to put that there for now.
Yeah, so the goal this year with our grant is the contractors will remove hopefully 90 trees and that'll add to like the 120 that we have slated to remove for the EAB. So this year, 120, and that 90 next year, hopefully for us, we'll remove another 120 and 80, additional 80 trees, and then the year after, another 80 trees. For the grant part, for the residents, I believe right now we have 10 residents that have, have inquired about removing trees. We basically, we go out there, look at what they have, make sure it's an ash tree. And once we get kind of a group of 10 of them together, we put that out for bid to a contractor. He comes in, gives us the price, so we kind of handle all that work for the residents. So they don't have to, you know, go and track down, get a few bids. And then we handle that just basically through us, our city forester Josh and Randy and I. So that's kind of an update on the EAB or the tree, in the tree grant stuff that we're working on.
What about the trees for the residents? Like trees that they, that are up for grabs?
Up for grabs? That, I'm, pardon me?
Monday, 8:00 AM?
Oh, that's when they can sign up for it? All right.
There you go.
Yeah.
Monday, 8:00 AM, you get your tree.
Monday, 8:00 AM, I didn't know that.
How's the irrigation project at Casey going?
Irrigation project at Casey is.
We'll keep filling, we keep feeding you, there's nobody behind you.
It is done, it is done. He finished up mid-week last week, so.
Saw Randy out there working.
Yep.
I got the big wave.
Yeah, now that whole, that whole inside area in there is all irrigated. So our plan is, is we're going to, I think we aerated that area. We're going to go black dirt, seed it and try to get that grass inside that area nicer on the pavilion. You know, that's, that's the goal. It'll be a little bit of a challenge growing grass with seed there just because it's very well-used. But we're going to, you know, do what we can do to get some nice grass in there.
When do you turn on the aerator at Silver?
The aerator at Silver would have gotten turned on over the winter.
Okay.
But the county monitors that oxygen levels in the lake. And because the lake was frozen over, then it was opened up again, and then there wasn't much snow. There's enough light apparently that got through there, where we didn't have to operate it at all this year.
Awesome.
So we got through that, got through the year without having to operate that.
We're not sure how much life left on that thing, so it was good to not have to test it, huh?
Yeah, I mean, hopefully, I can't remember how, how many years we are into the new motor, the rebuild that they had. But yeah, like I said, we started street sweeping, street sweeping again. Summertime help, we got all of our summertime help hired for the year.
Awesome.
So that's really nice. Normally, we're kind of into it and we ask some of the, you know, the people that we've hired if they got any friends. But we got that fulfilled for the year. So some of those will be starting at the end of April and then some of them mid, mid-May for that, so.
Fantastic.
Yeah. What else you guys want to know?
Dan showed up, he looked like maybe off the hook.
You're a pretty good warm-up back.
Thanks, Ron.
Thank you.
All right, appreciate it, bud.
I had no internet connection.
We had struggles up here as well signing in.
Lucky we had somebody over there in IT that got me booted up, or got me back up. Give me just one second.
Sure.
And there we go. Didn't we just finish this? Yes, doesn't it seem like we just finished this? It's kind of like a year, year-long process. It's kind of crazy. But good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Tonight, we're, we're going to have a little bit of our 2025 pre-budget workshop. This isn't the official kickoff to it, but pretty close to it. So I know in the past, there's been some questions and discussions on how do we compare with rates? Not just the property tax rate, but also some of our utilities. And so tonight, we're going to kind of show you a little bit of that information and then kind of set the stage for the 2025 budget. And so, you know, the purpose of this meeting tonight is to provide information to the city council in preparation for the 2025 budget. It's to provide an opportunity for the city council to discuss and direct staff on the 2025 levy target. There was a, I think, a retreat earlier in the year that city council had with the city manager. This is some of the highest priorities for the 2024. And as we can see, number six on there is to keep taxes affordable is kind of a vision component to it. And that really is where the budget kind of comes into play, not only there, but also balancing the affordability with being able to try to accomplish some of the, the main priorities that city council has. So kind of want to start you off and kind of tell you, take a look at how our market values are doing. So there are preliminary numbers that have come out from the assessor's office. Again, for the taxes payable in 2025, the assessor's values are as of January 2nd of 2024. So they've just recently come out. The preliminary median value home increasing is only one, one and a half percent. For this payable 2025, in comparison to the past two years, it's been 9.2% and 15.5%. So you're seeing that home values have, you know, started to go flat after the, the huge increases that they've been in the past. Preliminary market values overall, including apartments and commercial and the residential, are only increasing 0.8%. And in comparison to the past two years, we were at 7.7% and 17.7%. Again, so it's not just residential home values that are going flat, it's across the board. We're seeing that they've, they've finally flattened out. Here's kind of just a graph, you'll see graphs that kind of depict everything that we have. This is of a median value home. You can see from 2017, it was 100, approximately 167,000. And in 2025, and these are for the payable years, we'll be up to $303,500. Again, you can see that line up there from '24 to '25 is starting to flatten out. But we've had some huge growths ever since 2022. Three and four were some very significant increases. Again, overall, market values from the assessor's office, again, we're just shy of that 1.5 billion in market value. Again, you can see that significant increase that really started taking off in '22 and '23. Tax capacity, so first kind of give a little bit of what is tax capacity. So tax capacity is utilized to actually calculate the tax rate of a jurisdiction than is applied to all of the properties. And so tax capacity takes the market value. And then Minnesota, by statute, puts different percentages for different real estate classifications. For instance, a, a residential property is usually at 1%. Market, or commercial properties are higher. So what happens is the market value is then multiplied by this percentage and it's turned over into called, we call it net tax capacity. It's a tax capacity, then you take whatever you're levying and you divide it by that total net tax capacity of your unique taxing authority and you calculate your taxing rate. That rate is then applied to all net tax capacities on all properties. So the more commercial property you have, the more, you know, for equal market value, the more tax capacity you would have versus a pure residential type of community. So that's kind of a little bit about what tax capacity is. And it's, in the graphs that I'm going to show you, it's important to kind of see kind of the trends of that tax capacity and kind of the composition. And I think you're all aware of the composition of the city of North St. Paul. But it's kind of interesting in seeing that because it also shows you where your tax burden goes to. So kind of some highlights that you're going to see is that residential properties make up over 85% of our tax base. In my, my first year here, when we were going out for the first bond, S and P gave our, our rating and they give kind of a little description. They called the city, which I took kind of offensively at first. When I heard it, they called it a, basically a bedroom community. And I thought, well, that's kind of offensive. What they really meant by that part to it is that we're predominantly a residential community. And we don't have a lot of businesses and commercial activity that's happening within the city. We have fantastic transportation on major highways that are around here. And so people live here, but they work somewhere else. And I think you're, you see that, you know, with that residential property is being made up of eight, over 85% of the tax base. And it's actually a true statement. The tax increment capacity has increased over nine times the amount in 2015. Tax increment taxes are captured by the TIF district. So when we've had a number of our developments that we've done in recent years, it's adding to our market value, but not necessarily to our net tax capacity that we're using in our tax rate because it's captured. It's captured to pay off if we have a pay-go note. It's, if we go out for a bonding related to a development that's in a TIF district, it'll go off to pay off that bonded debt. But it doesn't get captured and utilized to reduce your tax rate. So even though TIF helps on the economic development side to it, it hurts as far as the net tax capacity and not lowering your tax rate. So it doesn't help offset the burden that the residents are seeing in their own homes. Some, it's a couple of graphs here that kind of depict that. And this is going from payable 2014 to 2023. You can see the upper line is residential. And you can see where that is significantly increased over time, of 5.2 million in tax capacity to 12.3. But you can see the commercial component to it is, is only risen 1.6 to approximately 2.1 million. So you can see that, again, our residential component of our tax base has been growing significantly. Our cur, our commercial is pretty stagnant. That comes into play when you've heard me talk about fiscal disparities. So we're considered in the fiscal disparity world, a winner. A winner because we contribute a certain amount to the pool, but we get so much more distributed back, which then is multiplied by the prior year's tax rate to actually give us real dollars. That, those dollars are then reduced from whatever we put out for a tax levy. And then the net amount is what actually gets distributed and calculated into the tax rate that's applied to properties. So if you've heard me speak, and there's a graph here that'll show what our fiscal disparity dollars have been over time. And I think we're in the range of about 1.2 million dollars. So if you thought about, if that, we didn't get that additional 1.2 million dollars and every $71,000 is 1% levy increase, you can see how significant that would be and how high our tax rate actually would be if we weren't getting the fiscal disparities. But it's a double-edged sword. We're getting it because we haven't had the commercial growth in, in pro, commercial property growth in comparison to the metro area. Here's, here's a depiction of, of the, of the tax increment tax capacity that I was talking about that gets actually captured, that goes into TIF districts. And you can see, again, since 2021, it's grown significantly because we've had a number of, of big developments that have occurred. The Centennial Building, you've had QuickTrip property. And so those are in TIF districts and the net tax capacity is being captured by those TIF districts to pay off obligations that we have for those. So those are actually not, you know, when they calculate the city's total net tax capacity, there's two components that are then reduced from that net tax capacity to arrive at the tax capacity that's used for the tax rate. Those two components are tax increment and fiscal disparities. And so our fiscal disparities has been pretty flat, but our tax increment has been increasing significantly. And we'll kind of move on to looking at some graphs for our levy, fiscal disparity dollars, and our LGA and transfers in. Our levy has, has increased 7.4% on average over the last nine years. Our fiscal disparity dollars has averaged a 3.1% increase over the past nine years. And again, the fiscal disparity dollars reduces the amount of levy that is paid by property taxes. Our LGA has averaged a 1% increase over the past nine years. And I know we've had a number of discussions on LGA. And for a number of years, there was a huge concern that the state may start taking away local government aid. That hasn't happened at this point in time. And actually, in the last legislative session, they actually increased local government aid. So again, if, if local government aid were to go away, we get a total, including general fund, and we put some in the streets and we put some into the parks, we get approximately about 1.6 million dollars in local government aid. So again, you can see that, what type of impact that would be. If you take that 1.6 million and divided it by the 71,000, it would have a significant levy increase impact for the city. And then transfers, transfers in has decreased $659,000 over the past nine years. The significant decreases were in 2017 and 2018. And by reducing those, it contributes to your tax rate increase. And I'll have a slide here that'll kind of show you that component to it. So first graph that you're seeing right now will depict the overall levy that the city has. And that includes the general fund, Economic Development Authority, and Housing and Redevelopment Authority. And you can see that since 2015, it was at about 3.9 and it's now at 7.3 million dollars in the payable 2024. Again, that's averaging about seven and a half percent levy increases on an annual basis. Fiscal disparities, you can see it, it significantly rose from 2015 to 2020. You see there's a dip in 2020 to 2021. That dip that's created in '21 and '22 and it stays there, a large part of that has contributed to the 0% levy that was done in 2021. You know, during the COVID time. Since that, since that time, our levies have been closer to the market value and the net tax capacity increases. So we've pretty much have held our ground in the fiscal disparity dollars. But again, you can see at nearly 1.3 million dollars, if we were not a winner in the fiscal disparities, we would have a significant increase in our tax capacity rate. And again, over 85% of that would, of that increase would be a burden on our residential side property. This graph right here depicts the general fund, local government aid, and the transfers in. The orange graph up on top is local government aid. And you can see that's been pretty stagnant. It's been pretty, pretty consistent over the years. It's been pretty, pretty consistent over the years, and this is what's included in the general fund. So, it's been, you know, it's within a hundred thousand dollars from where it was in 2015. So, it's been, been a pretty steady, resourceful income, even though that there's been talk in the past, but at the state level of reducing local government aid. You can see the transfer in, in 2015 and 2016 was about almost one point five million. That was reduced over time. Right now, we've been transferring in about eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars. What a transfer in is, is that it's transferring money from your utilities, from your EDA and HRA in the tune of eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars to the, to the general fund. So, in other words, you're subsidizing your core services of the city by the dollar amount of eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars. If you were to reduce and get away from transfers, again, you're looking at approximately twelve percent levy increase to be able to get off of that dependency of, of transferring in. The mayor had shared with me that, at the time, a, a number of years ago, when he was looking at buying a home, and he was looking at a home here in North St. Paul, and he was also looking over at Maplewood, and one of the decisions that he made outside of the, of North St. Paul being a much better city, was that the tax rate was significantly less than Maplewood. Part of that reason is, you're absolutely right, it was. But part of it was because we were subsidizing the general fund by more transfers from our utilities. And you can see that being depicted in here, that there was a significant drop in twenty, twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen. And you'll also see, I'll show you the chart on our, our tax rate, and you'll see in that 2017 and 2018 where our actual tax rate goes up significantly once we get off of that transferring in. So, now we'll take a look at that tax rate, and the city tax rate has increased in, in average of point nine percent over the pa, past nine years. The city has a third highest tax rate in Ramsey County, and that's significant. And you can see how it's changed over the years. But again, if you look at what happened in 2017 and 2018, you know, we, we jump up over three percentage points in our tax rate, and that's mainly due to reducing the transfers in from our utilities. Here is just a graph of showing what the payable 2024 tax rates for the cities that are solely or partially in Ramsey County. And you can see that we're only behind as, for, for the highest, and that's not the greatest thing to be at, behind St. Anthony's and St. Paul. And we've now caught up and surpassed Maplewood with our tax rate. Another question that had been asked in the, in the years past is, is how do we compare on our utilities? And so, we went out to a number of websites from cities that are around here, and then we made the assumption of utilizing a twelve thousand gallon water consumption on a monthly basis. So, we would have something to be able to do a, do an annual calculation on what the costs would be for, for the utility portion. And so, this is what it showed to us. And, as you can see, we got information from Lake Elmo, Vatness Heights, Oakdale, Woodbury, Cottage Grove, and North St. Paul, and Mounds View. And you can see where we're at today. If you take water, wastewater, surface utility, and garbage, we are about four hundred dollars higher than the nearest one to us, being Mounds View closely followed then by Vatness Heights, and then Lake Elmo. Now, the question is, why do we have such a high utility rate? Well, it really comes down to two components. One, it's the transfers that I have talked about. So, we currently transfer two hundred and five thousand dollars on an annual basis from the water utility to the general fund, and a hundred and forty-five dollars from the waste, a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars from the wastewater to the general fund, and eighty thousand dollars from surface water to the general fund. If you were to reduce those and bring them down to zero, again, they, those would have a, right now would have a significant impact on our property tax rate, but the last column there with the asterisk of North St. Paul, that's what it would do for our residential side of our utilities, for the water, wastewater, surface water, and garbage doesn't change. But that's, we would still be approximately two hundred and sixty dollars higher than Mounds View. That significantly, or the biggest contributing component to that is our capital needs. It's our infrastructural needs that we have in the city, and those have been included in our capital improvement plan. But, in the, in the, in the approved capital improvement plan that we, from last year, from 2024 to 2033, between bonding and, and what was going to come, what's on the plan for bonding and, and for the water fund, there's a total of almost fifteen million dollars worth of capital needs. When we look at wastewater, we're going to see that there's over ten million. When we look at surface water, there's another ten million. Those are really the contributing factors that make up that other two hundred and sixty dollars. If we didn't have those huge infrastructural needs, and it really has contributed in a large part to our streets, because anytime we do a full reconstruction in our streets, there's a street component, there's a water component, a wastewater component, and a surface water component that's there, and those are all included in the capital improvement plan. In addition to that, we have some relatively big expenditures that are on the horizon for the water, one being the water tower. And then, we have to replace all of our meters that we have, because they're coming to the end of their useful life. So, there's some significant capital expenditures that are on the horizon. What this is showing is something that I've been trying to say for the last couple of years, is that it's so important, when we get into that capital improvement program, that we're really having and spending the time on our dialogue and looking at what our capital needs are, and, and asking ourselves the questions, is there better, better way of doing this, or are there other ways of doing it? And the reason is because it's such a driving factor in our overall budgets, and you're seeing it in how it has an impact on our utility rates. So, when we come to that component this year, we really need to have that serious dialogue and, and whether there's some assumptions on, on useful life of, of components that we, we push out. If there's things that we need, need to make tough decisions, that we don't replace it for a number of years or so forth, but we need to kind of look at some different components there to see what we can do to try to reduce that capital expenditure component, because it drives so much of our budget. So, with all of that information, kind of want to bring us back to, which Councilmember Cole said, just sounded like we just finished this, and he's absolutely right, we just did. So, where we left off with the 2024 general fund budget, and we've shared these in the past, so, again, this is kind of our general fund budget, showing it revenue by category. And you can see, we have a large dependency on edvalorium taxes, property taxes, where fifty-six percent of our revenue is coming from property taxes. And our intergovernmental, which includes that local government aid, makes up nineteen percent. So, you can already see seventy-five percent of our general fund revenue is coming from those two sources. And then, the other financing source, which is the, the third biggest, at eight point five, is the transfers in. So, we're already over eighty-three percent of our revenue, you know, and when you look at a budget, there's really two sides to it. There's one, your expenditure, and one, your revenue. And you can see where our revenue sources are, so it means that we really need to start looking at, is there other ways to generate some revenue for the city? And, you know, we briefly have thrown out the idea last year, and we, we did some exercises of, of maybe that there's, you know, with the, the legislative change for the cannabis distribution, maybe that's something that the city looks into more seriously. Another thought that I, you know, have had, is that maybe we contact our legislators and, and see if there's a willingness to change the municipal liquor statute that currently says that municipals with a population of ten thousand or less can run their own municipal liquor store. Maybe we can get that changed. Maybe we can increase that population from ten thousand to fifteen thousand. It was kind of interesting, I, I went out to the state website and pulled down, the other day, and pulled down the population for cities in the state of Minnesota. I was amazed that, that well, well, well over the majority are underneath ten thousand. If we were to change that from ten thousand to fifteen, it would impact twenty-eight cities. And then, there's probably, I didn't count the, the upper part to it, there may be about eighty cities that are above the fifteen thousand dollar threshold. So, maybe that's something that we could get, you know, state legislation to make a change, that we could end up having a municipal liquor store. Throwing out those two ideas, because what it's illustrating is that we need to come up and think differently to be able to come up with some other revenue source for the city, so we don't continue to put a burden on our residents. The other side of the equation's expenditures, and that's going to be coming through our budgetary process. We're going to have to take hard looks at things. And I'll kind of, and there's a couple of slides here that kind of show you just a preliminary look of where we're looking at for 2025. So, we're going to have a lot of work to do. The next slide shows our expenditures by categories. And personnel is sixty-four percent, and contractual services is twenty-eight percent. So, again, you're seeing the two driving factors on this side, you know, being approximately eighty-three percent of our expenditure budget in the general fund. Expenditures by departments, you're seeing the, you know, for twenty, for the 2024 budget, police makes up forty-three percent, law enforcement makes up just shy of fifteen percent. So, you're, you're seeing what is known as public safety, that we're, you know, fifty-nine percent of our budget is public safety. And, so, I mean, those are areas that, you know, you know, maybe we need to take a look at, and you always look at some of the biggest areas first to see if there's some way to, to reduce any expenditures. Take a look at where we're at right now, and there, it's a number of assumptions, and we can look at those, but just to kind of give you an idea of just kind of a very preliminary, preliminary of where we're looking at for the 2024 budget estimate. Again, really, after I'm done here, and just a couple more slides, I really want to get a discussion with city council and kind of get a direction of where we're looking at. These budget numbers are, department heads have not prepared them. We're just taking from where we're at last year, making some assumptions of kind of where we could be at, really looking for city council to say, hey, you know, we really need to, to bring in a levy at such, such a percent, and it's going to be less than, than what's going to be depicted here. What we're looking at right now for an estimate is a seven point six percent estimated levy increase. What that, what makes up that is our salary and related benefits, and the number that you're seeing there, the hundred and seventy-three thousand, that is taking the assumption that there's a three percent cost of living. We all know that all of our union contracts are up at the end of this year. I'm just using the three percent, because that's what our current contracts have, and then also step increases. So, we're doing a salary projection based upon that assumption. Also, workforce comp, compensation costs, increase of about forty-six thousand. The financial plan for building maintenance allocation, remember that that was an area, our facilities, that desperately will need financial capital help in the future, that what we've shown in the capital improvement plan is not, in my estimation, it's a far cry from being totally comprehensive, but included in the CIP for 2024 was to have a facility assessment of our facilities, so we could really put good numbers into our capital improvement program, so then we can make sure that we're planning to have funds that would be adequate to take care of our facility needs. Boy, this thing's terrible. And then, the equipment allocation costs based upon our financial plans, needed a four percent increase, only amounts to twenty, there we go, only amounts to twenty thousand dollars. And then, our other line items, we basically just made the assumption of a three percent increase. Again, department heads have not looked at it, it's not looking at each individual contract, it's just trying to get something out to kind of make you aware of kind of where we're thinking we're at. And then, we started last, started this year, our last year's budget process, that we included the two percent for our street maintenance. Remember, we developed a plan for ten years, and if you remember, that, that two percent was basically to hold us to where we were at with our road rating, which was somewhere in the fifties. It wasn't moving us up higher, it was a way to start getting, us moving in the right direction, to maintain, and then hopefully in the future, possibly increasing that, to be able to increase the, the ratings on our roads. And then, we also had a one percent that was dedicated for building maintenance and parks. And again, I, you know, that one percent for building in parks isn't going to be enough, but that's what is making up this seven point six percent estimate for the 2025 budget. Unknowns, like I had mentioned just a little while ago, all of our contracts are up, we're going to have union negotiations, and so those will determine what that cost of living increase. Right now, at that seven point six, it's including a three percent. Again, facility assessments of our properties, we have not been adequately taking care of our facilities, and so we desperately need to find out what those numbers are, and making sure that we are putting the right amount of money aside to take care of our facilities now and into the future. There, again, department heads haven't submitted any of these numbers, so there's no changes in the full-time equivalents, the FTEs, you know, I don't know if there's any, you know, additional FTEs that are going to be required from department heads or, or asked for, but this does not include any of that. And then, it raises that question. Yeah, we've got, we're looking at that two percent levy for our streets, should that be higher, if we want a higher rating in our roads? Parks, I think we split that one percent, I think point four or five and point five five of that went between parks and facilities. Should both of those be increased? And then, what's been an ongoing dialogue is, is the community center, and what impact that would have on an operational side to it and/or a capital side to it for the city, and, and where do we find that funding, and, and what type of impact that'll have on the levy? So, with that, just trying to, to find out what your initial reaction to all this information, what parameters should we establish to make decisions that impact the, the budget on either a capital or operating basis, and what percentage of levy increase is tolerable with all the information presented? So, I'm turning this over to you. Get your feedback, questions, and hopefully we can get some direction that Brian and I can pass on to the department heads and start to really develop a, a budget to come back and have meaningful dialogue with city council.
Thank you, Dan, I appreciate, we all appreciate this update. I think it's very important. I'd like to see it, just a synopsis every quarter, just to see, because I think we just have to stay on top of this, especially with the numbers we're seeing. I think it's gonna, it's definitely going to have to be in, in front of us more. So, thank you for putting this together.
I'll start.
Yep.
Couple of questions for you, and again, thank you, the great presentation, presentation.
I'll start.
Yep.
Couple of questions for you, and again, thank you. Great presentation. I appreciate all the information. Really helpful to put this forward to us. Going to start with your transfers in slide. I thought there was a big number that wasn't shown there that I was a little bit surprised about. We voted for 1.1 million transfer in from the electric?
Correct. This is a depiction of what's in the general fund. That 1.1 million went to the street fund to start that. That's why you're not seeing that in this. This is the general fund that has a direct impact on our taxpayers. Yeah.
And for the 7.9% increase that you're forecasting right now, that's only with the statute or the transfers in that are currently on the books, the standard 300 from electric and those, right? There's nothing bigger?
Correct. Right. That's, that's holding it at that $820,000. Correct.
And how long does the moratorium go for local tax?
I believe another year.
Those were my questions about the information presented to us.
Thank you very much. I know that when I was talking to Brian, there were some streets and some other things that were coming in at double what we thought they were going to come in. Is that correct, Brian?
Yes, some of the road reconstruction projects that we looked at, next one up is Gerald Buell area. That initially, that project was going to be including the Chisholm area as well, but once they saw the prices come in, that was, had to be cut in half. I found that it was some of the other things that were out there. Also, last year, we had funds that we thought we were going to be able to redo the parking lot out at McKnight Fields that ended up coming in double the cost of what we thought it was going to be. So that was put off. Just, we just haven't seen these prices settle down since we've seen these huge increases, partly due to the pandemic and that's just supply line issues to just general costs. It's seen some high rates increases.
So by that, kind of the prices with that, with that 2% for the, for the streets, that's probably going to be a little, little weakened when it comes to looking forward, probably?
Well, I, I think absolutely. You know, and again, just, just from the information that we had last year, just of where this was going to, if we were able to do what was on the plan, that it was going to hold our rating pretty much a slight increase. But again, it was still rated in like the 50s on a hundred point scale. So if you're, what you're hearing from Brian is if we're not able to do all of that, we're not even going to be able to attain that. So, yeah, so we're looking at you would end up having to bump that up.
And that 2% levy for the streets actually can be part of this because of the, no, not having assessments. So that's when we put, when the council put money into there, because for a while there, there was no assessments and no extra money put in, correct?
Correct.
So now we're starting to feed the piggy bank.
Yeah, there's, there's that. And then, you know, I think at the time that the decision was made not to do special assessments, the plan for the streets was, was basically every other year to do a major reconstruction and bonding. We, on our plan now, it's not only that, but it's also this pavement preservation component that has been added. That, that's really where that $1.1 million transfer to help get that off the ground and get going, that and plus in this year, we increased the levy 2% to put it in to the street maintenance to be able to carry out that plan. Right there, you can see that we weren't, so those two, those two contributing components requires us to levy something that maybe in the last plan, there wasn't the need for a levy, but we would have never been able to increase our streets rating with the plan that was, I think, presented at the time that the city council made the decision not to do special assessments. So at the end of the day, yes, that's a contributing factor and we've also tried to pick up the plan a little bit so we don't lose too much ground on our street rating program with pavement preservation component.
We've seen those high costs as well with the healthy park project that was initially going to be done last year, but the quotes came in so high that we couldn't do it. And then fortunately enough, we got a $400,000 grant, so we were able to do the project for coming for this year, but the prices have just gone really high.
Yeah, when I look at all these numbers, they're pretty shocking. And you look at, this is, you know, my house, my budget, if I knew that, you know, these are the expenses, I don't think 7.6 would even keep me out of the hole. I'm just treading, is the way it looks to me. We're not really gaining anything. We're just trying to hold still.
Unfortunately, I think that's a pretty accurate depiction of it, yes. And that's not with adding, you know, some new services or, yeah, or really, I guess, raising the bar. So, yeah, I think that's pretty accurate. The good part to it is, is that, you know, we did start raising levy for our streets and our parks and in our facilities, so we're aware of the need. So I think we're on the right path. I think we're doing a better job, you know, as far as developing that comprehensive capital improvement plan. You'll see in the month of May, our financial statements will be totally complete and you've heard me say it before, you know, we, we did well in all of our, you know, as far as our fund balances in the general fund and our enterprise funds. So if we were just to do a snapshot and stop time right now, from a pure financial standpoint, we're sitting good. So what this means is that this budget will be a very critical budget. And what I mean by that is we're sitting in a very good position that if we really make smart strategic planning processes and decisions moving forward for the city, we got, we got a good opportunity in time to get ourselves out of the pickle that we're in today. And so it's really to make those turns in this budget coming up. And that's really why we wanted to try to give all the information out ahead of time before we even have department heads even starting that budget process.
Dan, I have a question for you about tax disparity. Right now, just in whole numbers, we transfer in about eight, eight and a quarter million or, I'm sorry, $825,000 from our enterprise funds?
Yes, $820,000, yep, correct.
By not having that on our tax levy, how much money are we losing in fiscal disparity?
I would have to do a calculation. I can't just give off the, off the top. I would assume, yeah, well, we're definitely losing something on fiscal disparities, but you're, you're then, well, it's one way or the other, it's either your utilities are higher or your property taxes are higher. You know, the residents are going to pay for it. So in other words, what I'm saying is that if, if we didn't do those transfers, we actually could afford to drop down our utility rates. And that was that option that was way over to the right-hand side on the graph, but you would be raising your property taxes. And so, you know, the median value home is going to pay for it one way or the other. But you would save, you would save some, but I'd have to do a calculation to figure out what that would be. I don't think it would be, I'm thinking maybe under $100,000 that it would save.
Okay, thank you. It's just helpful for me to know what numbers we're talking about.
Yep.
That's a great, I'm going to feed off of that one you said there too, because you said either you pay the higher utilities or the higher property taxes, correct?
Correct.
So I'm looking and we're the second highest for the pretty much property tax rate and we're the highest for utility rate. So we got high on both of them. Is that correct? Am I wrong in that?
That's where we're at. Yep, you're correct.
So right now, St. Paul, 300 and some thousand, Maplewood's, you know, 35, 40,000. You know, as the small ones, what's our population, we're closer to Moundsview, which is 34, and we're at 43. That's usually the one we compare ourselves. When people ask questions, usually we, it's Moundsview when it comes to kind of our sister city for size and different things. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, they're, you know, closer in size, population's almost identical, they just have more of a commercial makeup than we do.
Okay.
Yep.
So they're not a bedroom community, probably, then they have a little more commercial?
A little, little bit more commercial. We're carrying a considerable amount more in debt than they are. And that's part of, again, the 2% for the streets was to try to get off of some of that dependency on our debt in part of that 10-year plan.
Thank you. I can see where you mean pickle when I look at those two things together.
Just to mention another speed bump that could happen, depending on the water appropriations lawsuit that's out there, the DNR could force us to go on to surface water, which that would be, it's hard to tell what that would be for extra rates, but they would probably, they'd be selling us water on the wholesale level. Did they ever talk about what that cost, say it's a million dollars if it had to happen? Who would pay for that cost?
I thought we were done with that once we signed our thing.
No.
That's why we signed it.
We agreed to some of the steps that were on there, but the DNR has the ultimate authority. They come back and say, you don't have to, or you need to get on surface water. And that goes with every city that's in that lawsuit.
I thought we had a little ones, if we stayed under the gallons and the greed, did they ever thought that was the end of it?
I was of that same understanding.
That was the frustrating part about that is how little we use or well within their parameters, but we're kind of low-hanging fruit as far as proximity to tapping into a surface water through Maplewood.
On a future workshop, because I'm in the same opinion of all these where that it was done, can we have an update on that?
Absolutely.
Because I, I thought it was to bed as well.
We have just the man here that knows all about that.
Okay.
That's a sigh of relief. Okay.
Oh, no.
You ready for me?
I don't know. I don't have a ton. I do see 2025 planning as we have a lot more headwind than tailwind. I think that the union contract coming up for 2025, the timing of the last one was beneficial for us. It was done well before, you know, a lot of the increases took place. And I would assume that there may be some, they may be looking to even up the score, to balance it out a little bit. So I, I do see, I would love if we could keep it at a 3% number. We'll have to, we'll have to, time will tell in the next six months. The decision in 2019 to pass a zero levy predicated on COVID, did that put us in more of a tailspin long-term? Is that part of the pickle that you reference?
You know, it did from the standpoint to achieve that 0%, I believe there was a reduction of four FTEs, which if you recall, in 2023's budget, we brought it back FTEs. So that was a part of that, you know, that levy. So, yeah. So it did put us back, you know, a step or two. We, we did catch ourselves up in 2023 pretty much with the FTE part to it. And that was really a kind of our focus. And then last year was our focus on really starting to dedicate plans to help with our infrastructure, which will be another component to the 2025 budget.
I mean, what has, in your opinion, what has contributed to the situation, the position that we're in, your term pickle?
Well, I'll just, I'll just cut straight to the chase. I think there's been a lack of planning in the past. And that's where, you know, you've heard me say it over and over again, I think that the CIP plan is so critical because that's really your roadmap moving into the future. And then once that's developed, you have to stick to it. And, you know, we have to avoid going sideways and delaying things for maybe some other type of purposes that come along our way. But I think what you're saying is that there's a catch-up in that infrastructure. We've let our roads go down. Well, we can't stay there. We have to start building it back up, which we started last year and hopefully we continue in this upcoming year. There's work that our staff has to do. We need that facility assessment. We need to find out our conditions of our facilities. Since I've been here, city council's done one heck of a great job of supporting and making those tough decisions on raising levies. And I believe that if it's justified, it'll continue. But if staff doesn't bring the true numbers of what things are going to cost, we can't plan accordingly. And so we really, that CIP is probably the biggest component that, that's there. And, you know, there's been decisions in the past that, and again, you'll never hear me say it was a right, you know, that it was a wrong decision. I mean, there's, there's long-term benefits that can be achieved. Short run, they can kind of hurt. You know, a heavy investment in your 7th street, you know, in the Tiff districts, it hurt in the short run. Long run, they're going to help. I mean, in any book on economic development that you go out there, you got to build density if you're going to, to build any economic, you know, businesses in tract in the area, but they hurt in the, in the short run. And so it's kind of where we're at, but I think, to me, again, snapshot in time, fund balances are in excellent shape. We've started a plan if we continue on that plan, but we need to be aware that we are on the high side of, well, as Mayor said, everything. So we have to strike a balance.
I think that's, for questions wise, that's all I have. I just, I'm kind of in the same camp with the mayor that keeping it at 7.1 ever may, may be a struggle. We're going to have to look, have to look tight. And I actually wrote it down, but I thought I would end with it as opposed to lead with it. Compliment to you. I just want to thank you for the long-term financial plan, the 10-year plan that came into being after, it didn't exist before you came here. So thank you for, thank you for the foresight of looking forward and helping get us in the right path.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You indicated for direction?
Yes.
And how to direct you guys moving forward? I encourage that all the department leads evaluate their needs, wants, desires. I know that we were up for some fleet with fire department. Do we really, I mean, everything, I want everything evaluated. I'd like to see it all. If it's, if we have a truck that's decent and we are up for a new one, do we really need a new one? We're putting off some of these roads that us taxpayers are paying for and instead we're building up a new truck or something like that that we don't necessarily need, let's put that money toward a road that we need to get fixed. I'd like to see that all evaluated very carefully.
That'll be the direction on, on the CIP, absolutely.
I would also like to see, you know, you continue with your skills and suggestions. I mean, this is your, this is what you do. I mean, this is, you know, you have the pulse of the finances and understanding and coming to us with, you know, concerns. And that's why I said I'd like to see this, if we can do it, you know, quarterly, just to understand how we're looking, if we're improving some, if we're not, just being able to, you know, it's, it's not going to be good news some of it, but we can't avoid it. We just have to hit it head-on. We have to decide, we have to make priorities, we have to take care of some things and we just, I think this council's done a very good job of taking things, you know, go after things that, you know, it's, it's hard to do. And we work our way through it and stand back up and we go to the next one. So I think we're going to have to do that with the budget too on this one. We just got to have the information and willing to help, we just got to know what we, we just got to have it presented, just like you said, if the staff could present and under- As you said, if the staff could present and understand, you know, what we have, that really goes a long way. So we appreciate that.
Okay, will do.
I'd like to echo what my fellow councils.
Councilman's back.
Okay.
We're council members always.
But you're mayor, so I didn't know how to. And also, if possible, if you could present to us a few areas where we might be able to tighten the belt in some places that don't long-term hurt us. So when we're making the choices in June, July, we have some, i- if we need to tighten the belt, there are some areas that are smart to do it and not long-term punitive for us.
Okay.
You also mentioned the assessment on the buildings. Is that in the plan? I heard that last year, too. Is that facility assessments? Is that going to be coming up?
Yes, that was, it was funded in the CIP plan for this 2024. I'm not 100% sure where it's at. I think the last time I'd heard that there were a couple of proposals that were received.
Okay. So it's still moving forward?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Because this building's 20 years old now, and we're starting to get to that point. We all own, you know, cars, houses, whatever, we know we get to a certain point and money goes in.
Yep.
Anything else, anybody?
Just thank you.
Well, I think, I thank you for this opportunity to to share some information and get us thinking, and I know the year-long budget process, but then I don't get to see as much, so I kind of enjoy this. So this is, this is good. But, oh, we've got, we've got a lot of work to do, and I kind of play off of a comment on our last budget cycle, and it was, I think, more, the comment came up when we were looking at the capital improvement plan, and it was Councilmember Cole had said what he would really like to see is the department heads to really wrestle with those tough ideas and bring their highest and best priority list to the city council instead of having the city council be the ones, you know, making those those tough decisions. And so I echo that, and I think I'm hearing it not just on the CIP this year, but I'm also hearing it on the the operating budget where we really do need to, the department has need to work as a team and present a solid city manager budget to you, and then let you ask the questions that you need, but we need to be on the same page on our side, so.
And that's great, because we're not here every day. We're working, you know, we have our jobs, so we know what is presented to us. We're not walking around, you know, City Hall, talking to people, you know, how is it going, you know, cool water cooler chat or anything like that. It's, we have to know from you guys, because we're, we're just here on Tuesdays and other meeting days, so it's definitely important. All right? If there's nothing else, call for adjournment. So move. Councilmember Cole?
Second.
Second. Councilmember Norby, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. We have two minutes or so, so stretch for, and we'll start round two.
Thanks, Dan.
Yep, appreciate it.